It's 6:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. So, Mrs. Vance, if you want to take care of recognition, secretaries and support staff.
Absolutely. Everybody has shared what a great start to this school year we have had. And if I had solid wood, I'd knock on it. So it's not to jinx us or change that flaw, but there are so many that we want to recognize. And in an effort to make sure that I don't overlook anybody, I would like to read the list, the comprehensive list that the principals sent. And if you are here in the room tonight, if you would please stand so that we could give you the recognition that you deserve for all of the help that you provided to launch this school year. I know that I would really like to do that, and I am sure the board would as well. So Veronica Mendez, Kayla Buckner, Aubrey Franklin, Emily Brown, Kristen Horn, Mrs. Chauvin, Michelle Warren, Ellen Mappin, Dustin Green, Nathan Hoover, Sydney Hart, Jeremiah Small, Caitlin Mills, Kayla Buckner again. So people are working at various buildings, so I want to make sure that it is me. Nathan Eckert, Joey Sissoko Liano, Greg Marks, Kevin Scott, Patty E. Hallford, Melissa Langman, Natalie Russly, Bonnie Scott, Paul York, Sami Alawal, Mary Brunel, Helen Brown, Amy Widen, Michelle Shaffer, Amy Secknell, Terry Preston, Laura Myers, Bonnie Rambler, Julie Sitchin again, Donna Fisher, Connie Scott, Maggie Scooby, Chris Hooks, KJ Blackburn, Don Jervis. So, thank you all.
We do not do what we do without each of you here, so please feel free.
In my years of education, I could, as a minister, I didn't realize that secretaries and support staff secretly run the world.
We forgot the middle school. Valerie Tully and Damian Pertlebaugh. No, they're working at the middle school right now.
And I promise them, if you would like to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome to. If you want to leave, now is that time that I told you that you could leave and... A sincere thank you, truly.
If he didn't wear purple, he might have got it. I want to thank the board for allowing us the opportunity to give these people the recognition. They are a huge asset to the district. So thank you for taking care of them.
All righty, moving on. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting on July 22nd. Everybody have a chance to look those over? Any questions or concerns? Oh, we'll just do them all together. How about that? And then we'll move on to the next one. Approval of certification from the July 25th executive meeting. That looked good to everyone? Okay. Approval of minutes from the July 25th regular board meeting. I think that goes on record as one of our shortest board meetings right there. And then we have approval of the minutes from the August 6th regular meeting. And approval of the minutes from the August 6th 2024 study session. If there are no questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion that we approve the minutes as read. Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the fund report and the financial report. Did anybody get a chance to look through these? Questions? Thank you for the bubble. I appreciate that. All right. And... Do we need... Are those consent as well, or do we have to read them all? Thank you. All right. I don't remember this from long time ago. Secondly, the approval of the claims totaling $1,961,647.37. Questions about that? Moving on. Approval of the payrolls totaling $810,441.68. Concerned? If there are no concerns, I'd appreciate if anyone would like to make a motion? Where are we moving here? Approve the payrolls and claims.
I'll approve my every other line.
Every other line.
And the dish ran away with this spoon. We're getting way out of control here, I'm telling you.
I move that we accept the financial report.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Action items. Approval of the 2025-2026 school calendar. Anything you want to share, Mrs. Vance?
I'd like to begin by thanking Kristen Horn and Greg Marks. They put a great deal of time into it behind the scenes to build the foundation for the calendar. I want to thank RCTA for their voice and their input, and then a great discussion at our study session around this. And I believe that we have captured... I know that we can't take everybody's suggestions, but I think that we've captured it as best we can and made those compromises where we could.
I made sure to count the dates.
Yes, yes.
They do okay. Any questions about the calendar? Any comments from the gallery? Kids are welcome. Don't... I got a whole bunch of grandkids, and everybody has got families, so children are... They don't bother us. It's our business. So if any of you would like to make a motion that we approve the 2025-2026 school calendar? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the approval of the memorandum of understanding for the Corporation SRO.
So I want to continue to thank the Fulton County Sheriff's Department for their continued help with providing SRO services. The only notable change within this document would be the pay for the SRO, and that change is at $70,000 for this coming school year.
Any questions? Questions from the gallery? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the MOU for the Corporation SRO. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Ethan. Raise your right hand, please, in favor. Okay, motion carries six to zero. What'd you say, Mark? Approval of the new RCSC co-curricular and extracurricular charter wrestling. Should be girls wrestling, right?
Girls wrestling, correct. So the IHSAA has adopted two new sports for this school year: girls wrestling and boys volleyball. At this time of this proposal, I know that we've had a very good, strong basis for a girls wrestling team, and this is the request to make that an official team moving forward, which would be recognized by the IHSAA and participate in those tournaments.
Questions or concerns?
No, we had a discussion at our study session, and thank you that Mr. Gardner and his crew filled out this form to clarify, but just making sure I'm reading it correctly. It appears that it's modeled after cross-country or swim, where there is one head coach for both boys and girls wrestling, and so financially, it does not have a great impact on the... It's not another head coach for girls wrestling.
That's the way I understand the documentary as well. Any questions? Thank you, Jenny, for that. If not, I would accept a motion that we approve the new co-curricular extracurricular charter for girls wrestling. Thank you, Jenny. Thank you, Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on. Approval of the disposal of surplus items from the maintenance department.
So I think this document is becoming a live document. I want to thank Doug Bauer and his crew for continually working on this. I know Cassie's most excited about getting the things out of her basement in her building, but please know that we will continue to work on this. With the start of school year, we kind of got stymied in continuing forward, but what you see there is what we are proposing for those particular items, and then we will continue to update you as we move forward and are able to inventory those and decide what to do with them.
If you run out of things to sort, Doug, I have a whole basement that needs some work.
I will send Don Jervis over there.
Thank you.
Because he doesn't like to save anything.
Yeah, he's done a great job with this list.
I had a friend tell me once, "Only Jesus saves. The rest of us need to get rid of." All right, if we would... Somebody like to make a motion that we approve the disposal of the surplus items from the maintenance department? Thank you, Casey. I'll give you one, Mark. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. We have three different field trips for the FFA. First of all, we have an approval of an overnight field trip to southern Indiana for FFA soils judging, and I did look into that, make sure it's not during school hours, so that's a good thing. So, and I know that Mr. Pearson does a nice job of keeping things under control when these kids get out on their own. Any questions from anybody for item five? No, we can't. They're action items. We have to do one or two. All those, then, if someone would like to make a motion, we move forward. Thank you, Ethan. And Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. The second is approval of an overnight field trip to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis on October 23rd. Looks like it's... Yeah. Also, just an excellent learning opportunity for our kids. They grow from that, so much from that program. So, any questions or concerns from the board? Anything from the peanut gallery, as you call it? All right, all those, I accept a motion at this time. Casey. All those in favor. Motion carries six to zero. Number seven, approval of the overnight field trip to FFA forestry judging at Purdue in West Lafayette. And that is usually... That's usually on a Saturday. Questions or concerns about the forestry? I would entertain a motion that we approve as read. Thank you, Jenny. Casey. All those in favor. Motion carries six to zero. The second reading of policies, 5136 and 5200. Since it's the second reading, we've all had more than enough time to look at them. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll move forward with the motion, please. Okay, and then we have the first reading of policy 3220.01. And I believe that's the one about the cell phone policy.
No, this is the tag grant policy. But if I may, I want to lean on Mrs. Adley for just a moment. If we could waive the readings and adopt tonight, the state said... This is the type policy that we adopt every year that we work with the teachers on. They outline very specific stipulations. There are no changes. I have communicated with Mrs. Schallie in regards to this, and we're in agreement that no changes need to be made. The state says that the board has to have this adopted and uploaded in September, and I'm afraid that with the timeline, we may not be able to get three readings in. So if it's possible to waive those, since the policy itself is not changing, I know that I would appreciate it, and I'm sure the teachers would as well.
Why do you have a new policy then, that's not changing?
The state says that we have to re-adapt the policy every year.
Oh, I was thinking there was a resolution in the year.
And we, as superintendents, we have asked the state, we've asked the state to discontinue that because it doesn't change, and as long as it's a policy and it's been approved. But they say because they're releasing funds to special funds, we have to make sure we recognize the stipulations and solve those.
And Mrs. Adley has not come ahead that we may go ahead.
So what do you... Do we need a motion to suspend, or to do all three reads tonight, or to suspend the three readings?
You need a motion to go ahead and approve on the first reading.
On the first reading. And then do we do a second and a third after that?
As long as everybody's in agreement to approve on the first reading, or...
I got it. Approve on the first reading.
I move that. And I second that.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Lucky us. Okay. Next, we have our donations. We have our donations. Any updates since, you know, noon? Okay, good. First of all, we have... Wait, that's the education fund. That's not going to help me. Columbia Elementary, an unknown amount donation of scissors and crayons.
Is that one crayon?
Just the one. Hold on. Okay. Joyce Schroef for Belpedio's Classroom of Supplies. What a lovely thing. Columbia Elementary, $521.50 library resource printed materials from the Jennifer Kingery Overmeyer Memorial Fund Distribution 2024. Rill Elementary, $521.50 library resources printed material from the Jennifer Kingery Overmeyer Memorial Fund Distribution 2024. We thank that Overmeyer family for that. RMS, $50 for PBIS from Lori Shane's retirement. RHS, $800 for Rochester Volleyball Clinic Club from the Optimist Club of Rochester. RHS, $600 Artist of the Month, 10 kits of supplies from Julie Sutton. RCSC, $3,500 opening day shirts for the Corporation, Smith Sawyer &amp; Smith of Rochester. We're grateful for that support as well. RCSC, $1,000 back-to-school supplies donated by Dollar Tree of Rochester. And RCSC, unknown, challenge coins for recognition, Everwise Credit Union Rochester and South Bend. As always, every month, we are beyond blessed with the donations that we are given from our community, so we are thankful for all of those. At this time, I would accept a motion that we approve the donations as read. Thank you, Jenny. And Casey. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Personnel report. RMS, Paul Leisure, Special Education Instructional Assistant, hourly rate $14. RHS, Hannah Noel, Instructional Assistant, working with eighth grade, hourly rate $14. Corporation recommendations, Cal Stone, RCSC Athletic Director, annual salary of $67,000. RHS Athletic Recommendations, Amy Williams, volunteer for RHS Soccer Program, Lane Vakas, volunteer for RHS Soccer Program, Janet Schallie, Assistant RHS Boys Tennis Coach, with a stipend of $1,170. The other two, pardon me, Amy Williams and Lane Vakas, are volunteers. Food Service, Deborah Early, Food Service Assistant, sub, hourly rate $13. FMLA, Tabitha Small, beginning 8/29/24 through 9/25/24. Questions or concerns about that? If not, I would accept a motion that we approve the personnel report as read. Thank you, Mark. And Casey. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Congratulations.
If you would, please, would you introduce yourself and your family and just talk us a little bit?
Oh, come on up here, sweetie.
Come on up. I can if you want me to. No, I appreciate it. I'm Cal Stone, and then this is my wife, Brooke, and our daughter, Sheila, and then we have our first son on the way here at the end of September. So we are excited to get up here and get started.
Very good. Welcome to Rochester. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on. Hey, superintendent business.
We'll go through and give our directors and principals reports. So, Mr. Snyder, if you would like to begin, please?
I'm going to go ahead and start with little. Luke sent me some of his notes, and picture day is on Thursday. They had a successful fire drill on August 7th. Wednesday, last week, and this week's PD has been devoted to Alice training with teachers. Teachers will be conducting drill conversations with their kids next week, and email will be sent to the parents per our normal procedures for that. Mrs. Weaver has started her choir club, and Mrs. Walkman will be starting her running club next week, and Luke just said the kids and staff are off to a really good start. Do you have any questions for Luke through me? For Columbia, we mentioned it a little bit earlier with Belpedio's Classroom, if you're not aware of that. It's just a shelf that we have dedicated to Mrs. Belpedio, that we have extra school supplies and things for students that they can just come and take as needed. And we have some older kids' supplies there as well, just because we have before care and after care there, and the kids always walk past it. So that's just in honor of her. If any of you attended her funeral, we know that she didn't want flowers or things like that, so everybody contributed backpacks, and there was hundreds of backpacks at her service, and all of those were donated to the schools, all the schools in the area. So this is just a little fitting way to hope, remember her. Open House and Resource Fair was a success. The Resource Fair turned out really well. We had almost 20 different community agencies or places at our community or at our fair. Very well attended. A lot of parents went through there. Somebody brought popcorn, so that really brought them in, because they can smell that. But it was really good. A lot of good conversations going on. I talked to some of the people afterwards, and they really felt like it was beneficial to them. So Brendan McClain, I have to thank her for helping head that up and really put that together for us. We also had a very successful developmental pre-K open house, and they did a great job of doing that. Hannah Moore has started out. This is her first year in that program, and she's doing great. School bus safety was a big focus for us early on, and we had a visit by Buster the Bus, if you didn't see him online. It's this bus that's a robot, and it helps teach bus safety. The kids absolutely loved it. Kevin and I loved it, and we had a lot of fun playing with it. And I think the parents even enjoyed it in the car line. I don't know. You can ask.
I heard it got a reluctant person out of the truck one day. That's a win in my book.
We are in the middle of our beginning of the year testing for all of our students for our reading and our math. We completed our hearing screenings last week. We had a new sandbox donated to us. That'll be on next month's donations, and we'll recognize those people then, but it's a big deal for our pre-K playground. And our daycare has been getting large supplies of items in for the daycare through the Child Daycare Grant that we were awarded. We finally, the state finally got all of the paperwork and stuff completed, and now we're actually able to utilize and benefit from that grant. So we're getting pallets full of new toys, supplies, things we're stocking up on to make sure that our daycare is in good shape for the long haul. And then mentioned the Overmeyer Fund. We really appreciate that donation. That helps us buy books for our schools. Pictures on Thursday, Book Fair and Family Night in September, and McClure's first grade will be traveling there in early September.
I saw that on social media, the daycare, I think it's, are they called a cabana or whatever? I don't know. That was nice.
That came on its own pallet. That thing's bigger than it looks. Other than like four or five kids in there.
Like, you're going to need a stack on that.
I know. The bar's just going to get beyond reach. We'll all be having lunch on the daycare plane. If you need me, that's where I'll be.
Mrs. Murphy?
A lot more of the same. We, you know, went through our riddle to middle, our first day PBIS day. We did the hearing screenings, the fire drills, the picture days, NJHS inductions, and open house was last week. We've done all of our fall call-out meetings for athletics, parent meetings, and first practices minus one. I think we have one more coming up. We have started our fifth grade choir. That's up and going and doing well. Fifth grade band is still going through some band fittings and things like that, and hopefully next week they'll be able to start as well. We have a back-to-school dance this Friday. Kids are excited about that. And our first home athletic events are next week as well. Mr. Basham got to learn what a full moon means at the middle school. That was exciting today.
They got serious.
Lots of conversation about that today. And then we're also doing penny wars for PBIS next week, so kids are excited about that. Any questions? I wanted someone to bring that in. I don't know, Mrs. Vance, maybe. My son was one of the doctor last year.
For the kids.
Great question.
You know, Ethan does a lot of swimming. He might...
That is true. He's around water a lot.
First thing, I want to thank Mr. Martens for his time and effort in our search for the next Rochester Community School Corporation Athletic Director, and the other administration coaches that helped us with that. Everybody's assistant, Mr. Van Meter and I, and the Atkinson Girls and the Hawes Girls met Mr. Stone, and we took him on a tour before the board meeting. They got out of their car to change the child's diaper, and our children swarmed them. Welcome to the chaos it is. The RHS administration kids, so they're going to fit right in. All of our fall sports are underway. Fall play reveal happened. Mrs. Allen does a great job putting out videos to get students to guess that. It is Alice in the Wonderland. I try Alice. It's not sports. Auditions are Wednesday and Thursday right after school, so we're excited to get that cast set up. We make... We've made Picture Day for sports and the students. We made it through that, so now we're back to educating and coaching. The horticulture class has the mum sell that's happening right now. We were excited. We got an email from the college board in regards to fourteen students being recognized for their academic achievements. And that's good news through our guidance department. Coach Thomas and his golfers broke a school record. And sports passes are on sale right now at the high school, ten dollars for students. And I do not remember the amount for the other ones, but the key is we're trying to get students to get to those events. Coming up, we have a blood drive in September, and there's a tailgate party on Friday before the first home football game. It is youth football night, youth cheer night. So we're going all out. We're going to have a huge crowd for the first Friday night. We're excited. I think we got a couple of food trucks coming to try and entertain some of the kiddos as they are there to spend all their parents' money. Welcome, Mr. Stone. You saw what the RHS administration's all about right away. And your assistant's sitting right next to you. Any questions? Thank you for all your support as we work through that.
I just had one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I heard on the radio that the state looked...
So they haven't opened for public comment. Last spring, they put out some stuff that was going to totally change them. Then here, I think it was middle of last week, they sent out the updated document after the first round of public comment, which looks very similar to our current document. So, but they do have some new seals and ideas that they're going to put on the diplomas. My guidance department's out in front of that. There's a computer science requirement and a couple of other requirements that we're already meeting for like some of our eighth graders, and we're already doing, and we're kind of ahead of that game. So I appreciate all their hard work and due diligence. Once it's finalized, we'll dive into it real deep. Right now, we're just dabbling, because it changes after every public comment, so.
I wasn't sure what stage it was in. I just heard like a quick clip on the radio where they were talking about not doing the GPS and then moving back to Core Forty or however.
GPS will stay there. The Core Forty is kind of going on... I don't know. How they word it?
When they finalize it.
The wording isn't what we focus on. I guess we focus on what do you have to have.
Right.
But it's still going to give us some wiggle room. And we can actually start that with next year's graduates, but it doesn't officially start until our current eighth graders become graduates. But we can start to utilize it to our benefit. And we got some kids that we've already pinpointed. It becomes official in December, the end of December, so. Yeah. I got a webinar next week, I should know a lot more about it.
Mr. Shane Holmes?
Well, I think we had one of the largest move-in to the start of school that I can remember in years, and that's why I had Sala and Aubrey come and tonight and the others that help get stuff around. It's a lot, especially whenever you're dealing with school corporations that don't start until mid-August or states that surround us that don't start until after Labor Day. And you're trying to get someone to answer at central office so you can get an IEP and go from there. So we're off to a good start, down a couple of IAs, but we'll get there. I... The programs that I'm over, I can't do without the help of the four buildings. And I appreciate them, and I'll thank you in helping those teachers and myself get through things. I know Megan and I really appreciate that. Flipping into ELL, we were able to get another IA, and she is a translator also. We do have our first annual ELL Family Information Night, and that is September ninth coming up. And that'll be at this building for an hour, so.
Mrs. Do, a phenomenal job as the transition to third position.
Six-three secondary.
Mr. Ryan?
Nothing much in transportation, the smoothest start ever had, well, I can remember. The only thing coming up tomorrow, we got our annual fall plus evacuation, state mandated. It's all good there.
Mr. Ryan, I know you never did it again. You asked for my comments, and I would just like to share those now while we have Kevin. Just as a sort of urgency within the public, to be very cognizant of us stop arms. We have had five or six violations so far this year, and they continue. We have one after school this afternoon. We're trying for choice, one of those are waiting. He is to pay attention. We are, we have to turn lights, he has to be working. But we also have us on the road, the air and the stop cars are out. You need to pay attention in the stop. And you guys described the greatest, smoothest start we've had with the verification department, so we can hear your leadership there.
Mrs. Powers?
The state has opened up for us to apply for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so I'm in the process of working on that. Direct certifications and free reduced forms are finishing, being done, so that way we can match up as much within a household as possible. Our AFR was supposed to open this month, but we're looking at another thirty to sixty days before that comes about. And then we'll run directly into verification of those applications that came in. Within the next week, we're sending out notifications to household that that thirty-day carryover status from last year, that they'll either have to reapply or supply a new direct certification number for that. And last August, we started participating in the local farm-to-school. To date, we've received about fifty thousand dollars in grants for produce. There is also fresh hamburger meat that's coming in. The high school's got pork shoulder in that they are processing to send across the district to do our own pulled pork or just pork on the side. We just got a drop in the district for some yellow watermelon, so it'll be interesting, because there's a lot of them going yellow. So it'd be nice to see how the kids are going to react to see yellow versus red. Any questions? I'm sorry. It's the annual financial review for the Food Service Department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any more questions? Nope. Okay, thank you.
We're just continuing on our daily functions, and then hopefully we're getting up to full staff. We just hired one, well, we just had one start today at middle school. We've got one going through the background check. And then high school staff, we're down one, but we've got two interviews scheduled. So hopefully we'll be up to full staff here very shortly. Thank you.
I appreciate the board's support. Thank you for allowing us to bring in this core staff this evening. It was very important to myself and the team that we were able to recognize them as well. And the principals and directors are just doing a phenomenal job. We've had a great, successful start. Luca shared enrollments up. Looks very promising for this year, and that is a testament to everybody here in this room and those who left earlier and the welcome. Count Day is October... It's been pushed back to October. October third? Early October.
I just put third to the seventh, maybe.
I'll get a specific. You're so used to the September day, now they moved it to October.
From a week ago.
That's all I have. Anything else? We're looking forward to working with you. Anything else for the good of the group? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a great evening.